Good evening. I'll call this November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Fairfield Town Plan Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. Start with our minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion. Somebody Commissioner Harrison.
Did they come out today or something?
Did they come out? Hold on, let's.
I didn't have any issues with the minutes.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrison. Second. Yeah, all the regulars are here.
Right, yes.
Commissioner Raymond seconds. Harrison.
Uh, nothing more to add.
Commissioner Francis, did you say?
I I didn't see them on my agenda. Did they come out later or something?
No, they were in. When when you click the, when you when you click the single link now, there's a, brings you to a folder that has a list of things that should have been in that.
It was in there, okay.
I know you, I just emailed you. I know you were. You had a lot going. You had a lot going on today, so I I did send you a copy, but.
Well, I'm sure.
Any other questions, comments, go ahead and just do a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Six hands and an aye, passed unanimously. Second item. The CEDAS Award Acknowledgements. Barhart.
First, I'd like to thank Commissioners Bremen and Francis for their years of service and congratulate all those that are elected or newly re-elected to the, to the board. I did, I know you are oftentimes confronted with a lot of issues and problems and sometimes contentious issues, and I wanted to share a bit of good news for a change. I think many of you may already be aware of the fact, but the town was recently awarded Gold Certification from the Connecticut Economic Development Association for Best Practices in Land Use Planning and Economic Development. I'm a member of the Connecticut Economic Development Association, statewide Association of Economic Development Professionals. And in twenty nineteen, the, the group launched a certification program to elevate best practices in land use planning and economic development. Recognize those communities that are doing a good job in that area and hopefully elevate the profession statewide, make sure people are adhering to best practice wherever possible. In twenty nineteen, the town was a recipient of the first cohort of awards. That certification is only good for three years. We reapplied this year and were awarded along with seventeen others certification. We were among seven communities that are awarded the highest level certification, gold. So I just want to thank both the staff, we're closely with Jim and Emmeline, Matt and others, as well as the commission for your support. Think it's a good recognition for the town overall and certainly testament to all of your good work. So I just wanted to share that. This is our little plaque. Hold up the handsome plaque. Yes, this is our major award, so. I want to share that with you because I know many times you don't get atta boy, so. At least thank you for your support and efforts on behalf of the town, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barhart. Yeah, this is a great, really nice award, great award, compliments to yourself, Barhart, and your commission, and certainly to our staff as well. Some would please into what my comments will be later before our public hearing, but it's a good thing for, a good thing to be recognized for. As you say, we sometimes are in the trees a little too much, and it's nice to see in the forest, or. Well, great, I guess.
So, thank you. Thanks for dinner.
Thank you for that, taking time out on your evening for this, but. On to one sixteen Sherman Street, best of Michael Meehan, fifty percent release of a sixty-two thousand five hundred twenty-dollar bond pertaining to a special improvement. The Center of Design District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this special permit for mixed-use office and residential building was approved for this site in July, last July. The engineering department has reported that fifty percent of the bonded improvements have been completed, and we are therefore recommending fifty percent release of the bond.
Have a motion, Commissioner Braver?
Move to release fifty percent of the bond.
Commissioner Francis, second?
Yes.
No, I reviewed the, 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 recommended, uh, release.
Okay, Francis.
Yeah, nothing further than putting things to that building.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Straightforward, come put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Six hands and an aye, passed unanimously. Fifty-four Saskel Hill Road, plus a guarantee for a hundred percent of a sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-dollar bond pertaining to special improvements in the design commercial district. Mr. White.
Okay, similarly, a special permit was issued for this building, which again is a mixed-use office with one apartment approved on this site in October of two thousand eighteen. This building has recently been issued a certificate of occupancy, and the engineering department has reported one hundred percent of the improvements are completed, and we are therefore recommending a one hundred percent release of this bond.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Forward. Your second? Or Harrison seconds, Commissioner Ford?
It's, uh, the recommendation is to, uh, to approve it a hundred percent. So I would. Return the, or release the bond.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Commissioner Ford send.
I hear there are comments or questions from the commission, again, pretty straightforward with the support. Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next item is cannabis establishment prohibition, discussion of extension of prohibition, which expires February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. White?
Yeah, this, um, just queuing this up because the existing prohibition expires at the end of February, so we need to, some direction as to what this commission might want to consider doing. Either extending, uh, the prohibition another year, making it permanent, so we don't have to continually renew it, or, or make the retail sale of cannabis appropriate use, some define where you might want to do that. Under the state law, we would be eligible for two, uh, retail sales licenses. We have had interest from cannabis establishments asking where we stand. Hey, are you guys prohibited? And thus far, obviously, the answer has been, we are prohibiting. It's been a mixed bag. Westport prohibits, most of the towns around us are in a, a, a moratorium status like we are, extending that. There are obviously a dozen or more now dispensaries open within the state that that are operating, so. We just need a little lead time on, on what, where you think you might want to go with this in terms of continuing the prohibition, making the prohibition permanent, or considering making it permitted.
Now, this would obviously, any decision we make would obviously need to be noticed for a public hearing, but as Mr. Wend rightly said, be helpful to notice something specific or something in particular for that, uh, hearing. So, I don't think I necessarily need a motion, but I'll go down the line if anybody has thoughts on the matter. Um, I think you just, the staff is just looking for recommendation or a sense from us, so no motion necessary. I was, Commissioner Braun, I'll go down.
So, a decision one way or the other has to be made before the twenty-eighth, right? So we have five meetings between now and then or so, or?
Right, and if, if we, if, if there's no action taken at all and we're silent on the matter, then the use becomes permitted under the state law. So we either have to, you have to take an affirmative action to either permit it or prohibit it, and, and thus far, it's been a, a one-year rolling prohibition.
Kind of twice so far.
Correct.
Well, I kind of hope we would do a little outreach. I don't think we really have. I would like to get more information pro and con before we either permit it or ban it permanently. So I, my, I would be in favor of extending it for another six months to a year and maybe make a plan to, to solicit information pro or con. That's, that would be my thought, because it has to be one year can be like any time period.
Oh, no, you can, you can, you can set whatever time period you think is appropriate. You say solicit information, what do you, what do you?
Maybe put it in one of our planning meetings and have public comment and have that be noticed, so that's. Information. We had one fellow come in about a year ago who thought it was a great idea, and we have, we've heard a lot, though, from medical people, addiction people who don't think it's a good idea. And it might also be interesting to know where the other facilities are that sell, I think, Bridgeport.
Uh, I don't know if there's one, there's, I have the list, there's, I don't think they list.
Russo is signaling a yes behind you, so.
I don't know that the list that's available on the, the Consumer Protection website is completely up to date.
Okay.
Uh, but they had, under the, I did an e-license search and found twelve, recreational dispensaries and then a number of them pending, so I could certainly forward that list around. They're scattered around the state, but yes, there are some approved in, in Bridgeport. But any, any action you decide to take, whether you're considering an extension or permitting it, is going to require that hearing for people to have the opportunity to speak, yes.
I'll just go down.
Uh, my, I mean, I have some thoughts about it, but it really, I would say, I am inclined to take a wait-and-see approach to see what the surrounding municipalities do. Uh, my, anecdotally, I, I've been told there is a, one opening up on Dewey Street in Bridgeport, which is pretty much Fairfield border. So I'm, you know, taking a look at it more of a market approach in terms of serving potential people who want to purchase marijuana. And where they want to do it, and we want to have it permitted in town or not. I, I really, I keep an open mind, but I, I'd like to see who, who else is going to permit it, where it's going to be, and how that could potentially impact, you know, a market here in Fairfield. We really need to require one or not, I don't know. You know, I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Braun, maybe some input. Perhaps from people who do reach out looking to see, um, if they, you know, they want to open up, it'd be nice to hear from them, how do they operate? What their, yeah, how do they operate, what their hours would be, how do they manage it? I mean, the smell of marijuana is permeating the city of Bridgeport at all hours of the day. Think that, you know, you, you walk into the warehouses of Bridgeport, you walk through, you know, stent of marijuana. So I would imagine that some of the folks here in town of Fairfield will not like that. So if you're, if it's going to be placed in a strip mall, you know, next to a grocery store, and people, the first thing they're going to do after they buy it is probably going to test it. So I'm sure that's going to be an issue. So I, it doesn't, that doesn't foreclose my train, my thoughts on it, it just, it's just an issue that it's going to have to be addressed. I'd like to hear how they handle it. So that's why I kind of, at this point, would prefer to take a wait-and-see approach, see what the other municipalities locally are doing. Maybe we get line, maybe we don't, I don't know.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis, any thoughts?
I, I, I pretty much agree with Commissioners. But I real, I have nothing positive to say about it. All I hear is the odor is, is just awful. And my daughter's a doctor, says it's, and, and in fact, my sister is one of the major drug counselors in the state of Hampshire, and they both have nothing good to say about it, just gateway drug. Shouldn't happen. I don't know. I'd be surprised if Fairfield has any inclination to it. That's all I have to say.
Um, I mean, practically speaking, we, I don't think it's enough time to get substantive regulations in place. So I think practically, we're only talking about extending the moratorium or banning it outright, so to speak, for now. But I'll, I'll leave the rest till, I should have just skipped and gone last, but that's, I mean, practically speaking, I don't think we have it at the time to do substantive, um, regulations to approve it. So I think practically speaking, it's one of the, it's either denying outright for now, or, um, moratorium. I'll, I'll address those two later. Commissioner Bremen, any thoughts?
You're probably right about the practical aspects of, um, you know, proving the use of, um, or the sale of marijuana for recreation purposes in town by the February deadline. Because that would be a process with probably more than one public hearing, and it would take some time to write the regulations. I think a planning meeting is a great idea. I remember, you know, the first planning meeting that we had, uh, where we about purchased that other community since I took out that we're taking, and, uh, the majority of them did, um, have a moratorium. And so, so did we end up doing. Um, I think that there are things to learn about, um, the desirability or not of allowing the, the use in town. And I take a lot of the, the comments that were, were made already. It's valuable information. I think that, uh, you know, there's many substances like alcohol that obviously can be abused or that have, you know, harmful effects, or that you wouldn't, want to permit to be sold, uh, obviously to minors or in, uh, certain, uh, circumstances, but, um, that can be, um, you know, profitable and responsibly enjoyed. Um, so I, I think it's, it's good to have a, a public debate about it, and the, the planning session or one or more planning sessions might be the, the way to do that. Uh, fortunately, that'll be after my, my ten years over.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I would say, um, and I also, I lived in the city of Seattle for a few years, and I, where it was legal, and I could tell you, walked up and down the streets, it's not always a pretty smell if you're not into that. But, um, I would like, I'd be curious to know what Commissioner Braun is seeking in terms of gathering more information. Because last year at this time, I think we did see we'll take a wait-and-see approach. A whole year has gone by. I don't know what we've actually gleaned, and maybe we can be enlightened by that, what the other towns have done. Can we, would we consider entertaining a subcommittee to do some form of outreach or study, some kind of research? To, to start the ball rolling with whether we, you know, continue a moratorium or we begin to write regulations? Because I, I do, I personally don't like it, but I also represent the entire town of Fairfield, and I know there are pros and cons. My parents have told me I'd rather see it sold legally instead of my kid buying it off the street with fentanyl. So I, I know there are pros and cons to it, and I'd like to learn more. Is that something the commission would be open to? Is that something we can do?
I don't know if we're, I mean, I know that we can have committees, we've talked about it for the P O C D stuff, I'm not sure we're empowered to do a subcommittee for a type of, of regulation amendment.
I, I, I think you could if you wanted to, but I think in the, in the short term, I think the play would be to extend the prohibition, and then if you wanted to engage in such a, a process, we certainly could.
I guess I'm reluctant to say, let's do another moratorium, then let another year pass by where we're not proactively doing this. We're a busy committee, believe me, we're not always, we're not always looking for things to do, because we, our agendas are usually packed, but I would like to be deliberate in this and thoughtful and learn both sides, so. I would consider that, or just, you know.
But I mean, the, the point being, though, it, I guess the next, the more important practical question now is, i- is that, are you comfortable with a moratorium or an outright denial at this point for future?
I'm comfortable with moratorium. I would like to see a next step in, you know, like an active next step in place, so we're not here.
No, that's fine. Well, I mean,
you know.
That may be indicative of where we are to begin with.
Fair enough.
A year from now, we do a moratorium, and we're in the same position with no one really having a massive inclination one way or another, but I had, uh, some other thoughts on that, but.
And if, if I may, through you to Commissioner Braun, she said to do some kind of outreach. I mean, we had a here, or we had folks come last year, and I think we only got two people, one from CARES and another person who was a proponent of it.
No, I know, but that was.
Much more we can do.
I mean, I mean, that was, I think, a, a regular notice meeting, um, where you send it out to the public, and you're, you're inviting the public to come, but you're not necessarily engaging with the, connect with our Department of Health or, you know, specifically going out there as opposed to the regular notices, so. I think that's how it went, and, you know, I would think if we want to do the planning session, this may be that we are going to need proactive in seeking the information as opposed to like a public hearing, waiting for the public to come to us. So I would think that would be the way.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I would be inclined to, to go with a moratorium and set it down for a public hearing in the future.
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, what I'm hearing is a moratorium at the very least, I mean, I think that's probably actually what our recommendation is. I, I frankly, I'd be comfortable with an outright somewhat prohibition with, not a prohibition, but more of a, just get this off of our agenda. If somebody wants to come to us with a potential application, we get regulation amendments all the time. I would be almost okay with that as well, but I, I think the rest of the, the commission is comfortable with a moratorium, and that's fine with me. We'll see where we, where it goes next year, so to speak, if it, I, so to speak, for whatever reason, or we lose the momentum or don't gain any momentum, and we're in the same position, then that may be kind of indicative of where we are with our priorities. Commissioner Ford?
Just to follow up, kind of, tie along with that, that's, I think, part of my point. If we give it another year and a moratorium, and you see, you know, I mean, there's, you know, Westport, Bridgeport, and we're sandwiched in between, and there, those, whatever they have set up can service Fairfield as well, maybe we don't need it, you know?
No, that's a fair point, yeah.
That's why I think a moratorium makes some sense at this time.
Yeah, and I think that's fair, because that, as you said, that may change the calculus. I think we were also thinking we may be able to use guidance from other people's regulations, which I'm not sure if we have, you know, if, if it's out there, so that might be worth, if Bridgeport has regulations, what I'm gathering, might be worth researching what they are, see where they're putting it. It ties into what you said. Braun, did you have something?
Yeah, well, Commissioner Levy's, I've got his hand up, but, yeah, figuratively at least. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, um, along the lines of what you were suggesting, um, it might be appropriate, uh, I know we haven't had any applications to open such a facility, but at such time as somebody might file an application or be considering it, they could come to us and at the same time consider whether, uh, we want a moratorium prohibition or listen to the specific individual who, uh, is, uh, got a proposal and, uh, might provide us with some information at that point.
Yes. I mean, like I said, everything is going to, everything we decide here is going to need a public hearing, and I think practically moratorium makes sense.
So my only question is logistics. If we voted tonight, would it be one year from today or one year from?
No, we're not asking you to vote tonight. The, the, the current prohibition expires at the end of February. I just wanted to put this on the agenda to start the discussion, so we're in a position to be, to, to, hey, take your temperature on it and, and be able to, um, have that hearing and extend the protection another year before the deadline expires. So we're not asking for a vote tonight. You can't, I mean, you can take a sense of the body motion of what you want to do, but it's still going to require a notice to, hey, we're, we're, uh, we are proposing to extend the prohibition for another calendar year. And as others have said, whether you don't have an end date to that prohibition, right now it's prohibited, and, and, but that prohibition expires. You can take the expiration date away, and it's just remains prohibited, or we can change the expiration date. But in either case, like any other applicant, someone could come in and say, hey, I'd like to propose an amendment to the regulations to make it a permitted use, and here's why, here's what we want to do, here's where we want to put it. Similar to other uses that have, that come before you, and you can judge it at, at that point, but, but in, having said that, we could certainly get a, an updated snapshot view of what other communities are doing to have for that discussion for the extension of the prohibition.
And that's what I'm sensing from everybody is at least extending moratorium a year. Right. I'm, I'm sorry, I neglected our alternates, especially Commissioner Corcillo is going to be jumping on as a regular member soon. Um, thoughts on that? I mean, any difference?
Yeah, more or less the same, and I would, I would oppose an outright prohibition, um, I think for the reasons Commissioner Bremen said, in terms of the amount of time it would take, uh, to draft regulations in particular. I would, I would support a, a moratorium. I'm not sure, I think a full year moratorium is needed, uh, if, you know, in terms of crafting, uh, regulations, if we were to, uh, allow it. Uh, I, I also tend to agree with, uh, Commissioner Harrison in terms of, you know, a wait-and-see approach, and I haven't really done anything to wait and see. I would, I would support a more proactive fact-finding in, in some form, whether that's the subcommittee she mentioned, or, or just conducting some more proactive, uh, research or, or outreach. Uh, I'm not sure waiting and seeing is going to yield a bunch more than, than what we've gotten so far.
And so everybody's picked us on board with a moratorium. I mean, I would suggest the year to follow what we've done, and as you see, you know, the year ends pretty quickly, and, um, where you know it, uh, I mean, we're going to, if you said six months, we're going to, in, in six months, we'll be in the same position, I think. Uh, it takes a while to queue up either a subcommittee or a planning, or any of these other things. Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, I'm a bit familiar with this, you know, being a New York City resident for so many years. The problem is, is that, you know, you have a dispensary that's legal, and it, what it brings in is a lot of illegal activity because it's really kind of known within the, and, you know, I have family in, in law enforcement, it, it brings in, um, illegal dealers that surround the dispensary, um, to sell what they're selling, which who knows what's in it, what, what's going on, you know? And nowadays, it's like, you get a medical marijuana card, it's as easy as going to the library, getting a library card. So, um, I'm kind of firmly against it, and there's a lot of, uh, studies on how it affects developing brains. There's lots of pluses to medical marijuana with certain ailments like Parkinson's, things like that, but it is not, um, there's nothing out there saying that young developing brains are getting any sort of benefit from it. In fact, it's, it's, it does, can wreak havoc. And I just think it just kind of might put in a bit more strain to our local police having to, you know, surveil the area occasionally, who's coming in, I, I don't know, I just.
That's fair, and that's all topics that we're going to have to deal with, um, as we move forward. That's just, that's just reality of what's going to happen.
We will never to update, refresh the information that, that, A, we provided in the past for an updated snapshot of what other communities are doing. Perhaps if, if there's a community that's had a very good experience, uh, we can try to see what their regular sense are. It's been a while since we've asked our local PD is what their opinion of the matter might be. Uh, but, but we can gather all that in advance of a, a potential hearing to extend the prohibition.
But I would queue it up for an extension of the prohibition, say a year for now, and obviously we can discuss that at the time. It's always easier to just reduce something than to extend it. Um, so staying at the year and seeing what we decide to do at that point.
We'll formally vote on this, sorry, we'll formally vote on this if I were.
Well, we will, yeah, we, we, we will set up a, a hearing to consider an extension of the prohibition in, in time for you to take action before that presently expires, so probably in the January timeframe. But so this was helpful to kind of at least start the ball rolling. We'll start collecting, uh, additional information that may be beneficial to that discussion for you. Um, one other thing before you move on to what I know you want to do, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, there was an email that went out today. There was an inquiry from some in, and Emmeline sent out a, a training, uh, email today with some training opportunity. I just want to make sure everybody saw that. Uh, if there are questions about that, there's ongoing. I know our regional council of governments, MetroCog is trying to do a regional, put together a regional so that commissioners from the six towns can be together to do something. We don't have a final. We don't have a final plan for that yet, but I understand that's in the works to try to get you the credits. But if you have any questions about anything, MLIN's email let us know. And I did reiterate that if there is a cost to some of this, we do have built into our budget. We added a hundred dollars per commissioner. So if you incur a, a forty or eighty dollar charge for a class, that's okay. Just get us the receipts and we can process that reimbursement for you. But if there's any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to MLIN or myself going forward and we can help you with that.
Any other questions for at least the training? Before we get to public hearing though, I wanted to, oh, again, Commissioner Levy?
I was just going to ask if there's a self-study option for any portion.
That'd be nice.
Well, I think, yeah, well, some of the things are, are online modules that are available through Yukon Clear. And there's a link in that email that went out. So some of these things you can do on your own online for free. Some of you have done some of those. So we'll, we'll, we'll continue to, to source out free online activities that you can do on your own rather than having to subscribe to a specific time and a place event. But whatever works best for you, we'll, we'll continue to, to look for online modules that you can do on your own. Good question.
Thank you. Before we get to public hearing though, I want to acknowledge two of our commission members who are going to be leaving us, decided, who chose not to run this year and wanted to recognize them in their service. Commissioner Francis first. I started with you probably when we were, at least when we were alternates, eight, nine years ago or something like that, a long time ago. So we sat on that corner side in McKinley together, freezing. You're right. And it was hard to hear until the AC went off. But thank you very much for your service. I've always found your questions and your insight to be very valuable. Not just to me, but I know to the entire commission. Thank you for being the secretary for as long as you have. That's a, can be tedious in its own right, but thank you very much for that. Excuse me. And I'll certainly open this up. Commissioner Berman, thank you for your service as vice chair for now, what, four years now?
Oh, two years as vice chair, four years on the commission.
Four years on the commission, two years vice chair. I mean, you and I have been doing at least this role together. Thank you for all your help and your insight. It's been very valuable to me as I kind of learned how to be chairman.
Likewise.
Because, you know, it was always nice to be able to lean on you, fellow attorney, member of the bar. And it's always very helpful to me and very insightful. So I very appreciate your service to us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I've learned a lot from you. I've learned a lot from the commission and from, from being in this role. And it's really been a privilege and an honor.
It's been a privilege and honor to serve with both of you. Now, I wouldn't put it up to anybody else.
I wanted to thank also the staff and the town of Fairfield.
Yep, we have learned a lot, Meg, obviously.
Yeah.
Things you never thought of.
No, it's, it's very fun and rewarding in its own right. Sometimes very, I don't want to say selfless. It's selfless, very, very selfless to serve on this. It can be thankless in some ways, but people recognize your contributions in a very positive way.
MLIN, Jim, you've just been wonderful with all their guidance. Josie does a great job.
You're here. Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Others may have comments, but as the chair said, you, you guys serve in a largely thankless capacity in that regardless of what decision is made, there are going to be folks that are going to disagree with that, whether it's an approval or a denial. That's just the nature of the beast. And you guys step up and call it as you see it, as, as it ought to be done in a nonpartisan fashion. And from a staff perspective, I thank you for that. Meg, ten years is a, is a long commitment to serve on a commission. And that's appreciated. The last four as secretary. So thank you in particular for that duty. And Lenny, it's been a pleasure to get to know you over the last four years and for your contribution. So thank you very much. You guys have been a pleasure to work with and I hope our paths continue to cross.
Harrison?
I just say, I want to thank Meg, first of all, twenty-six years as a public servant in Fairfield. Mother was your board of finance, RTM and board, zoning board. I've known her for a really long time. My mother and her were in the hospital when I was born, when her daughter was born. So we go back, about twenty years. Not a little more than that, but seriously, Meg, you are, you're a true public servant and you're, you're, you always put our town first. Now you have learned a great deal from you. And Lenny, you're very thoughtful. I've learned a lot from you as well. And you're even keeled and you always bring a great perspective and I've learned a lot. We'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Levy?
I'm muted.
Muted. You can't say enough.
I just wanted to say, Meg, I think you and I have been sitting next to each other for the past six years. We don't always agree, but we always had a great time talking to each other and, you know, with such respect for each other's views, it's been a pleasure. And Lenny, you know, your exhaustive knowledge of land use and the legal ramifications on so many issues, we're going to miss you, but it's been great working with both of you for the last four and six years. Thanks.
Commissioner Bron?
It's been a pleasure working with both, both of you commissioners. And we don't always agree on everything, but it's always a thoughtful discussion. And it's always done professionally and with knowledge. And I appreciate both of you being on here. I've learned a lot from both of you. Meg always comes prepared. She's got her questions laid out. She's read the plans, which I appreciate because we always, always have time to read all the plans before we come in. So I appreciate that. I appreciate Lenny as well for your high level of knowledge and ability to speak very knowledgefully about all aspects of the applications. I'll miss both of you.
Commissioner Ford?
I agree with everyone. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to replace you guys. It's a bit of a brain drain, a lot of institutional knowledge going out the door, which I will miss. I will specifically miss. Both of you had very logical approaches to these applications. Both were always prepared, which was always very, just based on your questions. You knew the material. And, and I often would learn something new just based on your questions. And so I, so I certainly will miss that, that insight. So again, just like Jim set up with our paths crossed, the future I'm sure, surely will. And I don't know what you're going to do on your Tuesday nights. Should we go tune in? I wish you both the best in the future.
Sure. Now we can tune in. We'll have to miss you guys.
Commissioner Corcello?
Yeah, so obviously I've, I've one of the newer faces on here, but I really want to thank you both for your service. Coming in here a year ago, not knowing what I was getting into. I've learned a ton from both of you. Lenny in particular really helped show me the ropes early on and, and explain a lot to me. That's, that's guided me over the last year. And I think you've both set, you know, really helped set a great tone on this commission that I think town government in general can, can learn a lot from about how to function urgently, respectfully and effectively. So thank you both and I'm wishing you both the best of luck moving forward.
Here, here.
Best of luck to you. To Commissioner Reddell.
So a quick round of applause for our commission. Um, we are going to public hearing, so feel free to take off because those are not.
I will excuse myself and get back to my family.
Feel free to stay, obviously. The one thing I'll say, I'm not sure we're going to have too much of a POC's zoning updates tonight, this evening with new people coming in and people leaving. Said that that meets the day. Feel free to stay, obviously. The only thing I was planning on doing for the POCD update was kind of maybe give some general idea of where we would go from here on. But, you know, feel free to take off because I'm not sure, besides public hearing, which obviously you guys won't need to worry about in December. I don't expect to have a substantive discussion about the POCD.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Take care.
Hope it's treasure.
Want to stay?
Take care.
Okay, fair enough. I get it. Makes perfect sense. Well, you can ask, you're on the commission. Can I ask any questions? I'll call first item, public hearing, twenty-five Melville Avenue, special exception, special permit application of town of Fairfield pertaining to the exception of two new law courts that's still parked in the resident B zone.
I see Mr. Lowenstein on.
See.
Anthony Calabrese is also with us.
He's remote as well. Okay. So Mr. Calabrese, is he there or is it? Go up there, please.
We're here. Kurt Lowenstein.
Yep, I'm here. Sorry. Can you hear me?
No worries.
He's there. As I said, for the record, Kurt Lowenstein from Land Tech, we are working as consultants with the town for the development here at Tungus Hill. We were before you almost a month ago. Since then, we did do a kind of a rework of the plan, which I assume everyone has had a chance to take a look at at this point. If I can, I'll share my screen here and then walk everybody through the changes. Okay. Looks like that's sharing. Now everybody can see that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so previously, everyone recalls the upper lot, we had walkway, ADA compliant walkways and a series of steps that brought us down to the, the new pickleball courts here. You know, hearing the feedback from the town, you know, or rather, members of the commission and residents of the town, we took another look at accessing from the lower parking lot to help preserve this slope to the greatest extent possible for the usage in the wintertime for, for sledding. So the lower path that's already there, one of the commissioners last time pointed that out, that there is a gravel path that's here now. So we'll be utilizing that all by paving it. So it has a firm walking surface for ADA compliance and then, and then providing that ADA access up to the pickleball courts. It'll come to an asphalt landing here. Some regrading is needed on this existing slope that's there to meet the ADA slope requirements. And brings you up to the comfort station here. And then you can come up around this new walkway that'll be basically replaced in kind for the walkway that's there now. And then that brings you to the pickleball courts. The other major change was, you know, hearing the, again, hearing the feedback with particularly to the noise of the neighbors along Melville Avenue, we have added a substantial amount of planting. These will be Green Giant arborvities. So if anybody's familiar with those, those are the very large diameter. They usually get between ten and twenty feet, depending on the age of them. Diameter wise, they're in the ten to twelve feet in diameter. So they, they really do provide great screening and some great reduction for the noise across here. Other than that, I mean, I'd like to just turn it over and get some feedback and some questions from, from the public and from commissioners. I think we've, you know, with your recommendation, I think it's made the project a lot more meeting in the middle, so to speak, to, you know, preserve this, you know, preserve this sledding slope as best we can while achieving the goals of, of the project here. So anybody has any question, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Corcello?
So thank you for the responsiveness to the feedback and changes to the plan. I, I did see an email from Meg and Jane that was sent today that says the drainage report that was submitted is only for, I'm just reading this here, for a hundred year WQV, I think, water quality volume. And not for a hundred year flood. Can you just explain that and, and?
Certainly.
And what the decision making was there?
So I think there's, I, I know, and again, Jim's connected me with Meg. I didn't get a chance to have a phone call with her today. We have a planned call tomorrow. I think there may be some confusion on, on her end as far as review of the materials. The drainage system is designed for the 100 year storm event as well as providing water quality volume storage. So basically, in a 100 year storm event, there's a, a depth of rainfall associated with that over a 24 hour period, which generates a peak runoff rate, which is basically a volumetric rate, cubic feet per second rate. And you model that for the pre-existing conditions and the post-development conditions. We are reducing the flows on the site from, compared to the pre-existing condition. So again, basically we're reducing the rate, the volumetric rate of runoff on the site, which is the requirement of the town. In addition to that, we also are providing a storage and infiltration at a minimum of the water quality volume. So we meet both standards of the town requirements. That's why I think maybe there's either some kind of confusion on her end or maybe there's some additional questions she may have. But we do meet the standard that they did request of us.
So in your opinion though, you believe you meet what engineering is looking for?
Correct.
Okay. And we just need to get confirmation of that.
Yes.
Commissioner Bron?
Was a new drainage report done to show that it satisfies both the 100 year and the water quality volume?
Yes. And it was submitted with this survives plan that you're looking at here.
And there was also a question of how parking will address, if there's overflow parking, it should be diverted away from the water course. Could you point out where the water course is and where overflow parking would be, but if there is any, based on the new use?
We're not providing any additional parking. So that has not changed from the last hearing that we were in front of you. The, let me pull up the aerial. I think it's.
Where's the water course?
It's a little difficult to tell, even this isn't very good. It runs along the edge of the development through the tree line and then it follows its way down beyond the parking lot. Our proj, the project area is here. We're not working, we're beyond a hundred feet of where the water course is. So even on this map, it's, let's see. Let me go to the overall. Okay. So in here, where the contours begin to wrap on themselves, it follows along this edge here. This is where the water course is. And our project area is over here.
It goes around the baseball fields.
Correct.
Doesn't go in between the baseball field and the subject area.
I don't believe so, but again, I don't have that mapped on here. So I don't want to definitively say, but based on the contours, looking at this and speaking with conservation before we got in front of your commission, we were at more than a hundred feet away from the water course. So that's why I'm saying I suspect that it's what's running along this edge here.
In other words, you did not need a wetlands permit because you are a hundred, more than a hundred feet away from the wetland or the water course?
That is correct.
And can you just explain the difference between the 100 year versus water quality volume standards? Just so we understand that.
So the 100 year is speaking to the depth of rainfall over a 24 hour period of time. And with that rainfall, it generates a volumetric discharge rate. You may here refer to as the peak discharge, discharge rate from the site. So that is a, a volume that you need to control from the pre to the post. That is different from the water quality volume. Water quality volume is a, is a minimum volume generated. Referred to as probably the first inch of runoff, the first flush. And that has to do with, you know, as it is named, the water quality, that's for the treatment of it. Thermal cooling, generally the first inch of runoff is what you're most concerned with. Where if it's landing on, say, a hot parking lot or on a hardscape surface, you want to detain that first portion and infiltrate it into the ground so that it, it cools that runoff off. It also, most of the types of solids that may be suspended in runoff. It also, most of the, uh, types of solids that may be suspended in runoff, those also fall, come off in the first interval, so it's important to detain that and infiltrate that rather than allowing that to continue downstream, um, you know, depends on what your downstream is, could be drainage system, it could be a river, it could be a stream in this case. Um, but you, they're both components that, that need to be taken care of. The water quality volume needs to be infiltrated so that, again, so it doesn't make its way downstream, and the peak rate that's generated by the hundred year storm event, that needs to be controlled from the post to the pre, or pre to the post, rather.
And one last question, um, the last time, I think someone said this, but could you just reconfirm that revised, um, place for the, um, uh, handicap access will not require cutting any trees down that are there now?
Correct, yeah, from the, from the existing parking lot that's down here, we're following the existing gravel walk, so there'll be no trees required for that, and this area in the center where we're putting the new walk, uh, that's in, in existing lawn area. Same thing goes for the pickleball courts, we're not, uh, encroaching into the existing tree line that's there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or? At this point? So, Mr. Lowenstein, if you have more of your preparation?
Uh, no, I mean, unless there's any questions, I just wanted to run you through the changes. I mean, we're gonna, I'm gonna connect with Mega tomorrow, so we can, um, you know, put the, the drainage questions, um, to bed, and then, you know, like I said, I'm just looking for any feedback or questions from your commission or the public.
Mr. Calabrese, uh, if you're there, can you, I'm interested, you had some outreach to the public, can you just quickly describe or detail that?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, I'll, I followed up with a few of the neighbors that were at the last, uh, meeting, uh, Dr. Albanese, uh, in particular, um, went over the changes that, uh, Mr. Lowenstein just went over with the committee here, um, and they were very, you know, Mr. Albanese was very pleased that he spoke to a bunch of the neighbors that he originally had spoken to and that they were in favor. I believe he sent an email to the commission, which all of you should have received in advance.
Yeah, I think those changes being the arborvities, uh, probably being the predominant one, drainage and the, uh, pathway.
That's correct.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, anything further, Mr. Calabrese or Mr. Lowenstein, or can I turn to public comment?
I'm all set, thank you.
So, that ends the initial presentation of the applicant. I'll turn to public, uh, comments for this item. I'll start with, uh, people who are in person, uh, for those who are joining us remotely or by, or at least remotely, I think I saw somebody already sign in in the chat, but please do that. Anybody who's, uh, here, line up. You can just please state your name, your address, uh, keep your comments germane to the application.
My name is Doug Goodman. I've been a resident of Fairfield for fifty-three years, so been involved with a lot of sports and activities. But just on that drawing up there, help me out a little bit, just academically, I see that the four pickleball courts are laid out differently on the drawing than in actuality they are. Not that it makes much of the.
So Lowenstein, can you put up the, um, the render, well, not the rendering, but the survey that you had? Zoom in on the, uh.
As you can see, there's two courts up top, two courts in the bottom. There's four pickleball courts here, two in the.
Facing the other courts.
Yeah.
Two courts are facing the four courts, not side by side.
Looks like, uh, for the four courts, they're going up and down.
Yes, and those two are.
The other two are going left to right.
Oh, it's a different orientation.
Yes, it's a different orientation, that's all right. And where are the, where are the two new courts? I got it, okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein.
These old eyes can't pick that up.
Oh, it's fine, sir.
At any rate, so just one other thing, and I don't want to, I have this evening coming. We've been fighting for courts, but also many other courts around town, and you must see on the news and in the newspapers and TV, the popularity of pickleball, and it's everywhere. And I'm embarrassed to say that our town really comes up short when compared to other towns. And I notice you folks love to benchmark, so benchmark the other towns and see, example, Trumple, I think they have twenty-four dedicated courts, sixteen or twenty-four. We have five. And our town's a lot bigger, dedicated courts. We will have seven, we'll have these four, two more, seven, and Gold Manor. Make, we'll make seven, actually. So I just want you to be aware of the, uh, the shortfall that I think we have as a town, and I do think it's embarrassing, and I'm ashamed to even mention that at this point. So hopefully you folks will, will begin looking at different places that we can get courts approved, dedicated courts, because Tomlinson does have some stripe for tennis and, you know, overlay with pickleball lines, which is confusing and not the best way to do it. So, all I could say is, there's never a right time to do the wrong thing, but there's always a right ti, uh, wrong time to do the right thing, and this is the right time to do it. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, just through you to Mr. Calabrese, I just want to follow up on your question. Is Mr. Calabrese still online?
Well, we'll get to him.
I, well, I just wanted to ask a question about that.
What's your question?
Just curious. Ask him a question, I mean, we don't, like I said, we don't generally like to.
I guess, all right, then, you're good, I'll, thank you, sir, I'll ask Mr. Calabrese a question.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Mr. Calabrese, are you on the line?
We'll, public comment first, and then we'll.
No, I have, all right.
I'm here.
Thank, well, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to it. Next member of the public, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is Fetsy Hume, and I live at thirty-seven Pratt Street here in Fairfield.
You want me to sit to standard second?
I'm fine, I won't make it too long. The, in talking with Anthony, as Doug alluded to, when I look at the surrounding towns who had nothing and have far surpassed us, it's extraordinarily frustrating and depressing as someone who helped Fairfield get Tunxus Hill started in the very beginning. And Anthony agrees with me completely, he said the difference with, with that is that these other towns have more open space. And as we know, Fairfield is very limited in that fashion. So the fact that there is space at Tunxus Hill to add the two more courts, personally, I can't plead with you enough to say, please, please support this initiative. Pickle is a social sport. When Mark Schuderek did a survey maybe two years ago, when they brought in an outside consulting firm, one suggestion was to put one course in Stratfield and one court over here and another court up by, all over town. And we were very quick to respond that it's a social game, that one court will not be utilized to its full capacity. And Tunxus Hill still is the court that people will get up at midnight a week before to reserve. It's the prime court, it's got dedicated lines, it has dedicated nets, it's where multiple people can come and play together. And for those reasons, it's been extraordinarily successful. We play at Tomlinson because we have nothing else, but it's on shared lines, which are very confusing to the novice player. We are asking people with no training to come in and set up the nets, which you do need a little bit of a degree in engineering to do, and they get abused and used, and it's just not the quality program that the town deserves. So Tunxus truly, truly is the best spot right now that we have available to unify the program and bring the people together. To my knowledge, we already have a thousand people lined up on our Fairfield Pickleball Team app, and I know there are hundreds of other people who are not on it. So it shows you that in the beginning of the summer, we had maybe seventy-five people on this, to have over a thousand who are committed to playing, some competitively, some socially, some recreationally. The sport's not going to disappear, but we desperately need those two courts at Tunxus Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public in person that wishes to be heard? I'll turn to those joining us remotely or by phone.
There's been Emanuela who would like to speak.
Emanuela, are you there?
Yes, I am, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Emanuela Kiranda, I live on Nordstrand Avenue, which is, uh, actually, I live right across the road from the parking on Nordstrand Avenue, and I have two questions, um, which, I'm not too clear on the drainage issue. Uh, I don't know if you've ever noticed how much water pools behind home base on the baseball field after moderate rain. We don't even need the hundred year storm, um, it stays wet there for days, and I'm just curious as to where are you planning to have this water runoff that comes down that hill? Because we're all very concerned here because we have flooding issues at the best of times. My second question is, do you really think that the arborvitie trees are going to, um, take care of the noise issue when, in fact, walking on Greenfield Avenue, one can hear the pickleball, um, ping pong quite clearly, and that's going across the baseball field and through all that, that forested land and a parking space. So I don't know that the arborvitie are going to cut it, and I'm just wondering if you are very, very convinced of this sound barrier. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll ask, we'll address those with the applicant. Miss Harrigan, uh, yeah, uh, Miss Harrigan, excuse me, anybody else signed up?
I don't see anybody else.
Anybody else that, I'm sorry, I didn't have to answer.
Nobody else signed up?
Okay, thank you.
Nobody else.
Um, is there anybody joining us remotely or by telephone that wishes to be heard on this application? If you are joining us by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself.
There's nobody else there.
Nobody else is there, okay. No member of the public wish to be heard on this application, or further member of the public wish to be heard? I'll close the public comment portion of this, uh, application. Uh, we might as well start with the two questions that were just asked, um, where the water runs off and the, um,
Sound attenuation.
Sound attenuation.
Sure. So, I guess let's start with the, the sound first. Um, the trees will provide a, a sound dampening, um, there's no situation where, you know, it won't put the courts in a vacuum, um, but it will reduce, you know, it will dampen the sound. Um, so I, I, I think that answers the question, I don't know if she was looking for a quantitative response to that, but the trees will provide, uh, some dampening, but no, it will not eliminate the.
And I didn't see, we were required to give a sound report to it, but this was something that was brought up at our last session as a recommendation from the doctor, I forget his last name, um, there are currently four existing courts there without them, so now the idea is to put potentially two new exist, two new courts in plus this arborvitie, so.
Right.
You didn't have the arborvitie, you didn't have the new, the two new, uh, new, um, so, um, you know, I didn't see the sound report, though, right? They were required to have one.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You did not have a sound report.
We did not, no, that was not.
You were not required to, and I didn't see one. Then we have the, uh, water runoff.
Right, the flooding, the existing flooding issue that they have behind home plate, um, the runoff that will come, be generated by this is being detained within this, the drainage underneath of the patio and a portion of the lawn area, and that will attenuate the flows, basically, offsetting the addition of flow that's being, that would otherwise be generated by the, uh, the new impervious areas. So the drainage system that we're providing offsets that all the way up to the hundred year storm event. So the same would be said for the, the lesser storm events as well. Um, any runoff that does discharge will be distributed by a level spreader, um, and it's not being directed behind home plate, it will be directed down the hill there, um, but it will end up going down towards past the bleachers. But it will not be increasing from what's there now. If there's an existing flooding issue, I can't speak to that, but we will not be exasperating or increasing that issue.
You either be not affecting it or potentially helping it?
Correct.
But I, I don't understand where that water is going to be drained to. You, you said that it's going to be.
Emanuela, Emanuela, please, uh, public comment portion, I'm sorry, is done. Um, I'll ask, I'll let him answer, um, it one more, I think he'll repeat himself one more time, but this is the applicant's, uh, rebuttal time.
Show the plans.
Can you, uh, that's not a bad idea, can you, uh, Mr. Lowenstein, show the plans again and just?
Sure.
Where the, where runoff may occur, or if you can just go through the drainage system maybe a little bit more with, based on what was said.
So, this is our area that we're proposing for drainage, it'll be underground, you won't see it, um, but it will act to detain the water. So the water that is routed into this, through this trench drain, will be detained within this, and then it can infiltrate into the ground. That's where the offset comes from. Provides storage, it holds the water back for a period of time, allowing some of it to infiltrate and portions of it that will runoff. But again, the key thing in here is that we are reducing or holding to the exact rate that is there now, all the way up to the hundred year storm event. When and if water does come out of the system, the level spreader here, this gray hatched line here, water will overflow at the surface, simulating how it would if you just saw the runoff over lawn areas, and it'll flow this direction. So it'll flow down this way, and then it'll make its way around and down eventually into the field, but it's, the home plate is located back here, this is where home plate is. Our runoff is not directed at that, it's directed this way. Um, so, kind of twofold again to answer, uh, Emanuela's question, we're reducing or a holding compared to the existing conditions, so not exasperating it, and the discharge point on our system is not being directed at home plate.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris, you had a question earlier, thank.
Yeah, sorry, um, I, for, for, this one's for Mr. Calabrese, um, I was just curious in general, um, how many pickleball courts we have coming on the line eventually in your strategic plan?
Dedicated pickleball courts currently, with, once these two are added, we'll have six dedicated. We currently have thirty-two location, thirty, thirty-three locations that are double, at least double lined uh, currently. So, again, uh, we're looking to, I think there's one more location for six dedicated, but that is down the road.
Thank you.
Seven dedicated. Commissioner Ford?
Uh, yes, Mr. Lowenstein, can you hear me, okay? Just a follow-up. So the water is, you, you answered some of my question, but, so it looks like the water's being diverted towards, say, third base? Of the, the big diamond?
Yes.
Now, do you, so that field, I know Mr. Calabrese knows this all too well, I think every time it rains, that field doesn't, is out of use for at least a day, day and a half. Do you think that would, you know, improve the drainage? Do you think that would, you know, improve the drainage, you know, you know, towards the baseball field at any level, or just, just not make a
I don't think you'll see a substantial difference in the drainage. If there's existing drainage issues around the field, it's likely because the soils down the field area are poor draining. The offset that we're providing is incremental, so I don't feel you'll have a substantial relief there. But you certainly will not have an increase in, in the flooding issue.
All right, that's great, but thank you. That answers my question. I wish it, I wish it would. Because, you know, we don't have enough fields for the kids, but okay, thank you.
Add two more, two more questions. Any other questions though from the commission? So let me ask you this just because of drainage. Is there any way that this could be designed to help with that? Drainage into the field? I know that's going above and beyond, but might be worth asking.
I mean, certainly, you know, any, anything can be engineered. We can increase the size of the system, you know, we could fill the whole slope area up with as much, you know, crushstone and pipe as we can fit in there. And that would certainly help, like you said, that certainly goes above and beyond the scope of the project. But certainly there are things that can be done. You know, in between this project and the field, there's, you know, as a separate project, if this is really an area where that has a lot of flooding issues. Conducting a study on the field itself and trying to improve the underlying soils of that, or, you know, I'm sure eventually all of these fields will be converted into artificial turf fields. That helps tremendously with fields like this. Many towns are starting to move that direction. Simply because the soils are just, you know, historically, if there's an issue there, it's hard to remedy them short of, you know, just basically filling everywhere with crushstone and pipe to provide a little bit more available volume for the stormwater to go. Because ultimately it needs to infiltrate. But if you have poor underlying soils, just like you said, the water sits there for extended periods of time.
And I'll leave that to you and Mr. Calabrese if that has any potential. Because as I said, you're not obligated to and if there's, if, if there was a way of doing it and town wanted to do it to help in this case, so be it. But that's not required of you and I'll, I'll leave that to you and Mr. Calabrese. To Mr. Calabrese, hours of operation for this, these courts? I forgot to bring this up at your initial presentation. The neighbors, you know, at least the doctor had expressed support now in this. I know Emmanuela mentioned the drainage, I hope that, your explanation, that explanation was sufficient. Earlier, there were some complaints about the use being early in the day, like seven o'clock or even later. Can you just for the record say, you know, what the hours of operation are? If that, what we can do to ensure that those are the hours of operation?
Sure, of course. Permitted hours of operation start at nine AM and they go until dark.
People, pickleball community knows this, I mean, is there any way to I know you, we talked about last time, not really in a position to police it as far as opening them. Is there anything we can do just to make sure that that's done? If the neighbors have issues that it can be reported and followed up on?
Yeah, the, the police are the ones who enforce the noise ordinance. So again, they would be able to, you know, call the non-emergency number, the two-five-four, forty-eight-hundred. However, you know, proactively, you know, we place it on our website and we can also communicate that with the pickleball group that a thousand people.
Yeah, I just know with the sound ordinance, they normally go by a decibel and much of the police are going to be too keen to get there and kind of guess what the decibel is and get in the way, so to speak. So if much, if you're able to take complaints, grievances from neighbors and facilitate that out to the community to make sure that the hours of operation are met, I think that would be helpful.
We'll do our best to communicate that.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, just one more question for you, Mr. Calabrese. Do the nets come down November thirtieth or?
It's weather dependent. No, it's weather dependent. As soon as we get threat of the first snowfall, we take them down. The weight of the, the snow on the nets, you know, bends the, the posts, so we've got to come down.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Oh, Commissioner Brock, thank you.
Um, getting back to trees, you're adding the arborvitae along Meltow, right? You're not getting rid of the deciduous trees that are there now, though. Are you just adding these to that?
Just supplementing, yes. We don't have any plan to take down any deciduous.
And would it help with the sound or the drainage to add more trees if there, I don't know if there's room. It doesn't look like there's a lot of room, like even down along Nordstrand where the field, the ball field is. Would that impose on the ball field if you added trees or shrubs there along Nordstrand?
Uh, let me take a
Looks like there's a path there, though.
I mean, I don't see, as long as it's outside the bounds of the baseball field, I don't see any detriment to the usage of the field. I don't know how much benefit it provides you from either perspective. You know, trees, really the uptake of, of stormwater, you need kind of fairly dense planting of trees. Certainly, you know, any tree is better than, than no tree from that perspective. But to see a substantial difference, especially, you know, in the, the main areas of the field, you would need to have trees planted, you know, in the field to really soak that up.
Also, Commissioner? Any other questions from the, questions from the commission? Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Lowenstein, thank you for coming back again. Second application, I think it was, considering what we did the first time, I think it was well warranted. We appreciate your adjustments and your modifications of it. I think it's, hopefully you agree, even though additional time and expense on your end. We have a good plan that's work for everybody. As everybody said, pickleball is very popular. What we have in Fairfield is not a lot of open space and people being close to the potential areas where pickleball is. And we're, we are cognizant of various lawsuit, various lawsuits with noise complaints and such, so we're trying to balance as best we can. The pickleball community and the neighbors. And I think we did a good job in this case. So I appreciate your efforts. Anything further from you, either Mr. Calabrese or Mr. Lowenstein?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your feedback. You know, at the end of the day, this is a town project, so getting feedback from members of town as well as, as all of you, because I know you are members of the town as I am myself. So I think we, I agree with you. I think we do have a better project here with the feedback.
It's still have the sledding area. Thank you, Mr. Calabrese.
Haven't diminished too much.
I guess another fence for the kids to run into, but that's pretty far down, so we can do about that. Thank you both, thank you both.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
I'll close the hearing on this application. All the next application, three oh one Commerce Drive. Special exception in coastal site plan application of Fairfield Slope Ventures LLC to establish a motorcycle and scooter dealership in an existing building, design industrial district. Actually, Mr. Russo, do you mind if we take just a one, two-minute break?
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody?
Mine, mine's cheered up.
Slot moves forward, so. Thank you.
Hi, Emily, I'm back on the phone, Mr. Steve. Lost the internet.
Were you convened? Thank you. I understand Commissioner Ford is recusing himself this application as to what he's Attorney Russo.
Chair, commissioners, good to be before you tonight. Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzi LLC, offices at ten Sasko Hill Road. Here on behalf of the applicant. Chair, if I may, before starting, I just wanted to say congratulations to those commissioners that were elected or re-elected. And congratulations to those who now get the sweet relief of not listening to Ray and I drone on. But, but Commissioner Francis, thank you very much for all your service as, as a resident of the town. This is a board that has monumental tasks in front of it and gets minimal praise. So I just want to thank you for all the questions, all the insights these years, I really appreciate it. Turn, as a party gift, I will try to be succinct as possible. So I am here on behalf of the applicant for three oh one Commerce Drive. You all probably know it as the dimensions and glass building, if you've, if you've driven by it recently. But just to orient you, here's Commerce Drive. Right next to it is the US Post Office. And on the other side is the SCAP Auto Group Building, another dealership building. Across is the, the antique storeroom. And then behind it to the rear is the train tracks. And then beyond that is the Farrelletto Steel Property, the Fairfield Motor Cars property. And then beyond that is Ash Creek. And that's where the coastal site plan review comes in, part of this. But considerable distance, we have a property between us and the railroad tracks before you, before you get to this one. So the proposal is for a dealership for motorcycle and scooters, specifically Piaggio, which is a group that sells a number of different of the scooters, most popularly Vespas. So this would be a Vespa dealership, there's Motoguzzi, there's, there's other types of scooters, but Vespa being the, the most popular one. And it's permitted use, subject to a special exception in the DI District. There's not much in the way of what's changing on the site, the building's not being expanded. They are going to utilize the existing building. What they are going to be doing, again, if you've driven by that property recently, it formerly was very overgrown. And my client, since he has taken over, has really started cleaning that up, starting already to improve the landscaping. On top of that, we are properly striping it. There will be twenty-three parking spaces that will be located in this front area, which is where the patrons would park. And which satisfies your regulations for this particular use. And you probably also noticed if you've been by there, there's already a storage area in the, in the rear of that property. That will be used to store vehicles. You can see right here, there's a gated fence here. There's gate and fence here, that will remain. And this will be, you know, typical that you would see with, with any dealership. This will be the storage area for the vehicles. But significantly back, I know a lot of the other dealerships have it right up the front. This is, this is set back further toward, to the rear of the site. And again, this, this front area will be restriped to provide twenty-three parking spaces. There's also, if you notice in here, there's, there's three garage bays. Along with this dealership use is also a request for a motor vehicle repair or repair facility where they could repair these, these scooters. As you see common in, in most dealerships, have an accessory repair facility. So that is, that is facing this side right here, you can see they're marked here, the three garage bays, those are existing. Those will be utilized. And there's also a ramp here in the back, loading area back here as well. But you could see, we indicated here on the site plans, there's loading, there's space for a loading space right in front of each bay as well. So, you know, as far as site, you know, the, the site, it's really not changing much from, from what's there existing. You may have seen, there's been conversations too between the town engineer and the engineer for this project. This area back here has, it's not asphalt, it's a, it's a road mix. And so our engineer is working with the town engineer, the town engineer's been out to the site about adding some drainage. They're working on what that solution would be. The last update I got was that it would most likely be some type of grass swale along the back to improve the drainage. You know, again, even though this isn't a redevelopment of the property, the, the existing building is just remaining, to add some drainage in there to the back.
That drainage though for this application, or you're just looking to improve the site?
We're looking to improve the site, but if the, if the commission wants to make it a condition of approval that we go, that, that the, the drainage be added to the satisfaction of the town engineer, we'd have no issue with that. We've already worked with him and been talking with him about the solution to that, our resolution to that.
Do we, do we, do we need a drainage plan now? Or normally, as you know, normally get like a drainage plan if you need.
I, I don't believe so for, for, for what's specifically proposed here and, and basically just a reuse of the existing building. But again, it's something we're, we're looking to improve the property, whether it's been landscaping. whether it's been landscaping, the restriping, and adding drainage. So we were intending to do it anyway. And that's why we've jumped on it already.
Which is fine, I just...
I don't believe it's a requirement to your specific question, Chair, for something that's a redevelopment in this building. A reuse of this building, I should say.
You did the new drainage system. Do you need to come back to us? Do we need to see like a plan in order to actually improve it?
I don't believe you would require to see that again, Chair. I think that can just be approved by the town engineer as part of the building permit process when they go for the redevelopment. With regards to the inside, again, we're just utilizing the existing building. The first floor here, you can see there's two showrooms indicated in the front. This faces out towards Commerce Drive. And then behind it, you know, and again, this is intented in. So it's really kind of a perfectly laid out building for what would be the vehicle repair portion of the building. And then there's second floor where they will have their offices. It's a bit different than your typical dealership where, you know, if you're in the market for a car, you're looking for an SUV for your family, you are going to go, you know, you'll go to BMW, you'll go to Audi, you go to Toyota, you'll go see a bunch of different dealerships. This is more lifestyle oriented. You are, if Vespa is your thing, if that is something you are interested in, this thing, you're going specifically to this location. So it's more of an appointment-driven use. People will come in, they're going to get, I was talking to my client about, they're going to get a Lavazo Espresso, they're going to see pictures of Italy. It's more, while it is a dealership, it's more about a lifestyle that people are choosing to kind of add this luxury item to their life. So it's a little bit more, you know, it's more controlled than you see with a dealership where people might be coming in and out. Again, it's more appointment-driven. And really, that's, you know, that's really it. Again, they're utilizing the existing building, they're utilizing the existing site, just making improvements and converting this building for the use.
Commissioner Braun?
I'm just looking at aerial. Looks like it's, there's a fringe of green space on all sides. Is that still there, or was that eliminated?
That's still there, and I think it's been cleaned up. It's been...
Cleaned up, do you mean remove vegetation?
No, it was overgrown. There was actually growth on the building, that just completely overgrown.
So there's still trees there?
There were some trimming that needed to be done.
The white birch is still there, it's pruned?
Yeah, sure.
The white birch remained, side of the building, we just pruned it up. Ryan, sorry, Ryan had briefly the applicant for Fairfield Motors, our favorite sports ventures. We improved it, we removed a lot of weeds and overgrown vegetation. We were able to save the white birch. We saved the alperrites that are adjacent to the post office. And then we cleaned up. We kept the trees that were, say, with Dottie Horticultural, who does a lot of work for the state and city. Stacy had done a lot of work. So she saved what was good trees, I guess, and she cleaned up a lot of overgrowth.
I assume you have some kind of landscaping plan that you're doing that maybe we don't need to see, but will you insist that they use native plantings and as much as possible? Because that also creates a good buffer and some kind of water absorption as well. But are you, this says here in the town engineer's email from the ninth, they wanted you to calculate runoff for the additional impervious areas. They said also, the site is in a depression, and they wanted you to create either a rain garden or a swale to collect the water, either down by the railroad tracks on the right or along where the post offices. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so there's been subsequent conversations to that. And the solution that's being zeroed in on is the garden swale option. And so that there would be a garden swale located closer to the railroad tracks.
How much impervious surface is being added? Because it didn't look like, from reading it, that anything was being added. But there must be something being added.
There's no impervious surface being added. The...
It says there is.
The, it's unclear when this area, prior on, when this area became. So if you go out there, it's a road mix, but I mean, it's, it's...
Is it like semi-pervious or something?
I would say it's more on the impervious side than... Yeah, it's more on the impervious side than it is on the semi.
Can that be used, can you use pervious papers for any of that, or no?
Well, well, it's just, yeah, it's a storage area. So what the engineers were working on was the garden swale option. What they thought was the best way to the water quality volume requirements that there are in everything, that that would be the best option to doing that.
And then I just had a question about, so the business is Vespas, which we don't, I don't see them around here.
Vespas, they are becoming more and more popular, especially in the beach areas. And one of the, I mean, this is a far distance for dealerships. There's one in Stanford, and there's one in New Haven. So that's actually, for dealerships, that's a pretty big gap. And I see them, I know my kids have friends down in like Roatton, and I see them down there in some of those narrow street beach areas. They're very popular.
And you're also going to do motorcycles as well?
Well, that's what they're termed, but you've probably, you've seen maybe, there's some that are two wheels, and then there's some that are three wheels.
You're not talking about like a Harley type?
It's not a Harley, but they are like, there's different varieties of them. And some are scooters, or some are more stable three-wheel, but they're all open.
We are having Motocuzzi too.
Motocuzzi.
Motocuzzi, which is one of the Italian brands of, like the Triumphs, the European bikes.
Okay, so this is sales and repair and maintenance?
Sales and repair.
And the repair and maintenance, obviously, inside?
Yeah, just, yeah, all inside.
So you're not changing something of the door at all? You might be adding impervious to what they think is semi-impervious now, but that's where you have to...
And it's just, yeah, really bringing it up too, because it wasn't, it just kind of happened over time back there.
Thank you, that's great.
It was previously a storage lot for construction equipment and...
It hasn't been used for a while, I don't think.
There was like, there was like construction equipment there, there was like gravel and stuff like...
Sand I've seen back there, yeah.
The Mohican Valley family owned the...
I wonder why it had a follow-up to the drainage and then...
I was just going to expand on that. Jim went, for the record, that is what was just explained. The front half, where there's a vertical line, I don't know, Chris, if you want, where the fence line is. So to the left of that line is all existing pavement. To the right of that line, previously, the owner of the building was allowing that rear portion to be used as a contractor's storage area. So there would be construction equipment, materials, storage, and so forth. And that has, over time, compacted that. So when you look at Mr. Hurley's email, it talks about using a high curve number means that he's not treating it as lawn. It's been a compacted soil condition. And now there, now it has like asphalt millings on top of it so they can park vehicles there. So it's not a grass-to-asphalt situation. It's kind of a compacted surface to a more formal surface. So the engineering department, we inquire it as, hey, is that going to trigger any additional detention? And because this site is kind of uniquely situated, I think Bill makes reference to it being in the lower portion of the watershed. They're just looking for solutions. So if you're otherwise inclined to support the application, I think we can certainly, as a, to your comfort level, have a condition that that drainage be incorporated as a wise plan.
And it would be subject to engineer, you know, satisfaction, okay.
Commissioner Harrison?
Please, Commissioner Braun asked my question about pervious, so, okay, good.
Commissioner Collins?
Being a scooter person myself, it's, I'm concerned, I was wondering, in the service end of it, some people don't have the budget to get the Vespas, which are very fine scooters. Will you be servicing, say, Wolf or some of the other brands? Or just exclusively servicing the Vespas, which aren't as many in this town as you think. A lot of look-alikes, but they're not as many.
Yeah, I mean, our intent is to service from a feasibility study, just, we're opening a new dealership, so obviously to employ people, and we will probably service other makes as well. There are, the technicians will be trained on the Piaggio brands, but trying to find skilled labor is difficult, so I'm sure we'll find someone that can work on other brands as well. More so probably the gasoline, and then Vespa and Piaggio both have electric versions of bikes. So our intent is to focus on the Piaggio brands, but open it up to other people as well, from a pure business standpoint.
So like general tune-ups, fluid changing, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, probably tires, fluid changes.
Take on the other, other, just parts are particular because you might not have that in stock, nor do you...
Initially, you probably won't stock parts, other than a Piaggio and Vespa. But the intent is, there's only so many vehicles, or motorcycle, there's so many, two-wheeled vehicles in the universe, so we'd probably service more than that. There's not a lot of, what I'm learning from a lot of clientele and a lot of customers, there's not a lot of places to get motorcycle serviced in Fairfield County. So we'd probably, some of the service we would offer, and then kind of figure it out, the other brands as we go along. If there's more demand, we'll stock parts for those vehicles as it grows.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Your turn, Mew.
Will you be selling motorcycles or e-bikes?
We will be selling motorcycles as well. We will not be selling e-bikes. We'll be a franchise dealer for the Piaggio brands. They currently don't offer any bikes. Our intent is to carry the Piaggio brands, which include motorcycles and scooters. They do have electric scooter, electric versions of the, they have the petrol versions, and then they have the electric version, but we will not be selling e-bikes.
Any other questions at this time?
Chair, can I just quickly run through the conditions of her approval? I'll be brief. So regarding the location, type, character, and size of use, we feel that this is in harmony with the neighborhood. Obviously, this is a bit of a dealership row. So we are just another dealership added to Commerce Drive. The nature and location of the use of buildings shall be that there's adequate access for fire protection. Yes, we're not changing anything from what's there currently, and there is adequate fire access. Regarding whether the streets serving the proposed use are adequate, yes, Commerce Drive is served well as an access for these dealerships. They don't add a ton of traffic to it. Again, this is more of a boutique luxury dealership. It doesn't have the kind of traffic that you would find at the others. But regardless, Commerce Drive is a perfect drive to handle it. Again, we're improving landscaping on the site in accordance with zoning regulations, and this use is in conformity for the zone regarding the specific standards for automobile facilities. We feel that we satisfy those. Particularly, the vehicles that are being worked on will be stored inside. They will not be outside. You're not going to see, you know, a car with the front, or a motorcycle with the front end taken off. That will all be done inside. Then with regard to Coastal Site Plan Review, we feel that we are consistent with the Coastal Management Act. The truth is, we are a considerable distance from the coastal resource here, which is Ash Creek. Again, there's our site, the railroad tracks, and then the Farrelletto Steel/Fairfield Motor Cars site in between us and Ash Creek. But on top of that, and as we're taking as a condition of approval, we are going to be adding drainage to the site in conformity with whatever the town engineer requires of us. So with that, we feel we satisfy the standards for a special exception permit and Coastal Site Plan Review.
I have a question for, oh, sorry. Does this require the tree per parking spot thing, or is that only for bigger parking lots, or retail?
Parking lots in excess of 20 vehicles.
This is not, I assume, that, right?
So this does not...
Well, it does, this has 23 spaces on it. It's an existing parking area.
Isn't that parking for retail for customers, not parking for vehicles they're selling, right?
Correct. We, I don't think, traditionally, that's for the customer parking. The vehicle inventory generally has not been subject to that requirement because typically, the way they stack vehicles isn't necessarily the way you line a parking lot. It's...
So you don't believe we need to have the trees?
No, I think there are a couple. There are trees in front of the building presently, and...
Or they, I mean, I guess they made the regulations in this respect.
He's on the side, and there's a giant, big birch here.
Yeah, there's a birch right here.
There's a big redwood here, and then a cherry tree, and then there's a couple of trees down here.
I saw them on the, I saw them...
So you and I were dead here, and then we're overgrown with them.
So if you're keeping the trees out, could satisfy that requirement, I'm assuming. They don't have to be in the parking lot?
Correct. They don't have to be in the center of the parking lot.
A lot of additional landscaping to the front of the building and the side. We'd have to clean it both first, unfortunately.
Get it off the building.
It hasn't been maintained in about 10 years.
Can't have an ecosystem growing on the top of the building?
No.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if there's a change in the ownership of the property? Is it, or is it...
The Greenwald family are...
Still the...
We're leasing, we have a master lease on the property.
Any other questions from the Commission? Anything further in the initial presentation?
Chair, not to be too bold, but if it was at all possible for the Commission, if they felt comfortable with this application, if you were able to vote on it tonight, it would be greatly appreciated, considering the upcoming holiday schedule. Understand, it's not your normal practice, so if not, that's totally fine, but just if it was possible, it'd be appreciated.
Reason for it, besides dirt?
Just to get started, there's a whole licensing process with the state that we would like to, you know, complete and finalize with them. So it would just be appreciated if possible.
I mean, the normal practice is, I know you got Thanksgiving, but absent exigent circumstances, I'm not too inclined for it.
Understood, understood.
Any further questions in the initial presentation? Your hand go up, and I went down. Okay. So I'll end the initial part, initial presentation of the hearing, open it up to the public. I see anybody in person. Mr. Randolph, you're going to be on in December. Do you have any questions?
Not.
Okay, that's fine.
He doesn't have to watch the video, he was here.
Figured if you had questions, now's the time.
I have questions, but you guys, good presentation, so thank you.
Anybody joining us remotely or by phone, Ms. Harrigan?
Just Fair TV and Commissioner Levy.
I'll say it just in case, if anybody's joining us remotely or by phone, please identify yourself if you wish to speak on this application. It's Press Star Six. Any else in the room? I'll close the public comment portion of this section. Attorney Rizzio, Rizzio Russo, excuse me, any rebuttal for yourself?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll close the hearing on this then. Thank you. As I said, I wasn't intending to get into a substantive conversation on this P O C D, our last item point. We need to get up to speed, and Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Francis leaving us. But at least goal, or at least what I, how I would see going forward, the short-term, midterm future to be, our next hearing is early December, second Tuesday in December. What I think we should do as a Commission is for us individually, Commissioners, to see what further questions or comments or concerns that we have. Either that's new, it's fine, as we said, we were expecting rolling new things. New questions, comments, concerns, issues, I'll just say. Existing issues that weren't addressed, or existing issues that were not addressed, or you want more addressed, want to be more addressed. So what I would ask is by, in a few weeks, preferably by, you know, a week before, even two weeks before, but a week before the next hearing, submit those to staff. Let's reconvene as kind of our thoughts as to where, you know, major topics, moderate topics, even details at this point, fine. The idea is, I want, I think we, everybody but myself and the staff and everybody else needs to see where we are with outstanding issues. That will guide us as to where to go next, whether it's to go to the consultant with these further questions and then have a redraft. and then have a redraft and then go to the public, or if we need to go to the consultant, if we just have a redraft, go to the public and then see the consultant thereafter. So there's a few different directions we can take. I think it kind of depends on where we all are with the conversations that we've currently have and, excuse me, with the conversations that we've had, where are we now? I would ask us to, even if you're resubmitting things, which I think is fine, I think it's helpful for the staff to see, instead of having to go through historical stuff that we've submitted, at least see where we are now. So take a look with issues that we've now have, that you don't feel that have been addressed, which is fine, or want further comment on, or, you know, it wasn't fully addressed or whatever. Then we can see what exactly go next because my educated guess is that when we go to the public, it's going to be high-level stuff, which is fine. That's just kind of what I, I mean, some, I imagine some stakeholders in Fairfield will have some more very specific things, but I suspect it to be very kind of high-level. And I think that'll be very helpful to us. But I'd like to get a draft out based on what we've all had, because we've had some serious talks and some serious movements. I think having a redraft before going to the public is helpful. Question is, do we need to talk to the consultant first before the redraft, or can we do it after? I don't, it can be both, I guess, still, but I think we need to kind of have a lay of the land as to where we are with everybody with their issues, you know, existing or in, haven't been fully addressed. So that's my thought. Yeah, I'll get, Mr. Commissioner Harrison, yeah.
Yeah, and a question, I guess, and I appreciate all the really good discussions that we've had, and I think we've made a lot of good progress. I guess I don't feel like all the questions I initially submitted haven't answered quite yet, and that's, I know because we've gone in a lot of different directions. Would it be easier for you to go through them one by one, like the email or in public? I know some of them have been kind of addressed, but it's been a while since I looked.
Yeah, I, I think what would be helpful is to, and I went, I went back and reread that in, in, I, I want to put words in, I thought we had a really great conversation at our last meeting that touched on a lot of things. I think what's important is, okay, where are the other items that we might need more dialogue on? If you've got specific questions you don't think have been addressed, re, either take what you've submitted and re-highlight that, and I'm happy to, we can, we can talk about that, just so we can know for our next discussion, you know, where we should focus our attentions first. So I think that, as, as the chair just said, that would be the best guidance for us. We have been kind of, I don't want to say scatter shooting, but, but, but we thought what the priority items were based on the comments that we initially received. There may be some smaller things there. I think we've, you know, we've already agreed that we need to redraft certain things to take attention, to minimize certain concerns that were raised by that language, and I think we're prepared to do that and revise that draft to take that tension out of the plan. But from the bigger picture items, if there's stuff that you think needs more dialogue or discussion before we do a redraft, that's really what we need to focus.
And I'm not insinuating you were.
No, and I don't take it that way. I, I, I don't, I don't take it that way either, but we're, I think we're all, I think it's fair to say that everybody's mind, we're all in a little bit different place now, having had the benefit of some discussion than when we originally released the draft. So your viewpoint on your own comments may be a little different than they were then, which is fair, but, but what we need to know is what's still, what's, what do we still need to, to hash out before we go to redraft?
I will revisit them this week, so it's been a while. All right, thank you.
That's kind of the idea. I don't, like I said, nothing's really set in stone, but I, I do think getting a re, getting a draft out there and then having public comment is going to be helpful.
Yeah, and that, and that.
Talk about getting a draft out now, because to the public, because we haven't worked on, I have a lot of red lines. Also, we were gonna, weren't you sending it to some of the departments? We, we have something from departments from like a year or two ago, but were you gonna, what's the status? Are we sending it out to departments to see what they think of this draft right now? Because if we are, that's different. We need to know what that is, because that will feed, you know, they're experts in their area. So how is that working into this? Because I don't think this is ready for public meeting, any close to it, you know, unless we're ready with the draft.
Right. I, I think we're on the same page there. You do have some, we've had some specific recommendations from Public Works that we've already provided to you that we can, that are easily made part of the draft. One was specific to downtown drainage that they're coming. We did have some discussion about green infrastructure and that, which is still fine and belongs in, in the plan, but they wanted some additional language that, hey, to really fix this, we're going to need to spend a lot of money to increase the outfall of the drainage initially, to have that identified. And also with respect to, we're not expanding the footprint necessar, we're not proposing any expansion of the footprint of the sewer service area, but there are existing infrastructure pipes that need to, that need to be addressed. And that's.
Questioning as well?
Yeah, they've, they've had, they've had that. That's, that's been their main input. We are meeting on the 28th of this month with the Board of Ed. We've had communication with them throughout, but for us to, to present with them, which we certainly will do. But we're looking for, you know, I know there'll be, so I think what we're looking for is the bigger strategy recommendation questions, where you fall on those, what do we still need to have more conversation on before we go to a redraft?
So when we meet with departments, or are it's departments or commissions? Are both?
Like, we've been, well, with the Board of Ed, it's, it's a commission, but others are department head and how they want to.
They know this is the one.
Through their own commission is, is, is up to them.
They know this is a draft. This is not our product. So, so we need their input. So what, and conservation, land acquisition, like I'm environmentally sensitive, so I would like to have, anyone who has anything to do with open space, I would like to have land acquisition, sustainability task force. I don't know if they've weighed in or not, but I would like them to look at it. I thought I was a little weak on that, honestly.
I think, I, I think.
Conservation.
I think going forward, I think we did recognize and agree with, I think it was your comment, that the way the open space was shown on the map, it didn't clearly depict what's conservation versus.
Confusing. That could be cleaned up.
We could clean up that map. We do think it's probably prudent to include a recommendation that there be a further, I think the open space plan in particular.
Which we don't have one.
Is, is a topic that warrants its own kind of standalone study. So I think that we would support a recommendation, and we've been talking with Tim Bishop, who's a conservation director, to say maybe a joint, like a recommendation for there to be a joint open space plan, not necessarily as, as a standalone planning effort jointly with the Conservation Commission, land acquisition in, in this commission, as a planned recommendation. We do, I think, need to articulate clearer the inventory of what we have, that it's not just, I mean, there's 1,100 acres of open space, which is like conservation kind of open space with a capital O.
It's like natural open space.
But then there's also 400 and some odd acres of parks and another 1,700 acres of private open space. If you include Audubon, Espa Clan Trust, the golf course properties, which are open space, that total approaches closer to 3,700 acres in, in all. So I think we can articulate that a little clearer.
Can be specified, that's all.
Yeah, I think we can do a better job on the map, and that's in, in the plan, and I think that's there. But a recommendation to do a more formal open space plan as a separate standalone planning effort, I think is a warranted recommendation.
And other commissions like harbor management, shellfish, you know, there's a lot of commissions and boards that health, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, I don't frankly.
Anything that has to do with land.
We're gonna, what this plan is going to impact the shellfish commission or.
Well, we've sent it out to the various town departments and commissions. Who got soliciting and looking at it though? Like all of them are looking at it, or?
No, we haven't sent it to every single board and commission in the town. We've sent it to the, to the agencies that we have common interaction with, you know, so, you know, in, in, in those departments, the Public Works Director, the Conservation Director, Parks Direct, we make reference to their own, they've just completed their, their parks master plan that we make reference to.
As an error in the parks master plan, they consider, well, that's a whole separate issue.
But again, those, those issues can be worked out, but just for our own direction, we need, you know, go back now that we've had some conversation, like I think it's fair that the perspectives are a little bit different. Like, I, I know mine is from where we started, from where we are now. Yours is likely different as well, and, and if there are other things that we need to talk about or talk about more or haven't gotten to, that's what we really want you to, to point out to us. And if there's smaller things, you know, feel free to, to reach out if you, if you want to have a conversation offline on any of those things, we're, we're here for your.
Because our next meeting is right after Thanksgiving, right?
No, our next meeting is not until the 12th of December.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, early December would be a kind of a shot, would be a, well, targeted date if we can get there.
Yes, much better.
So if, you know, if you've got a question that, 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 once you review those, your, your initial thoughts, and you may have new thoughts, if you've got a question, you don't have to wait till the 12th of December. You can always shoot us an email or pick up the phone. We're happy to have a conversation and, and talk to, to all of you.
Yeah. This relates to really a lot of the questions you guys are asking. It's two questions really about process. So what, what is the scope of the consultants, I'll say revision drafts? Do they have, have you engaged them to make two revisions, three revisions? Do you have a budget for, it must have a budget for how many times they're revised? And then I guess secondly, we've got red lines, we've got ideas, we've got public input. Do, do you have a process to collect all of that? Because it's, it's going to be a deal for you to sort.
We have, we have already, and I'll share with you when we have that opportunity.
I guess part of that is really how would I, you know, how would I provide you with information? Is it an email? Is it questionnaire? You know, because it, you, it's going to be tough for you guys to just sort through this tangle of.
Yeah, we've, we've got some general comments from the public already and some commission folks already, but primarily before we reach out again for public comment, we want to make sure that the commission is comfortable with, with.
But so, so in terms of getting information back to you, is Word document, a Google doc, a questionnaire, how, how do I?
I think just a, a narrative email, I think is fine, but I, I, when we, as we spoke before the meeting, when we schedule our sit-down time, I'll have for you by then all of the collective commissioner input that has thus far been submitted, as well as the public and others.
And I watched the last meeting and I've read the doc. Okay. So I've done all my homework, but I've done most of it.
No, it's, it's, it's a work in progress.
But in terms of, uh, number of revisions, how, what, when's the big, where's the beginning? When's the middle? When's the end? In terms of what you've scoped out with the?
Well, depending on, there's, there's three pieces to the budget that we have with the consultant. There's a, a, an overall reorganization of the zoning regulations, which has been done, which we haven't really talked about much at all. I mean, because I think the P O C D document is the primary document, and then it's going to lead us to the next steps in the, in the regulation draft. So one is a reorganization of, that exists as a draft document that will have to go to public hearing. The second phase or the third prong to this is there's a, there's a slug of, of the budget to, for, to consider substantive changes to the regulations, to, to consider potential implementations of the recommendations that, that end up in the, in the P O C D document itself. So there's not a, a, a huge piece of budget left for redrafting. I think we are capable of in-house redrafting many of the things that we've already discussed, and I think we can do that collaboratively with our, our consultant. We are going to need to, to polish up some of the mapping and the graphic information. So I think we're pretty close there. I don't think we're going to have iterations. At, at some point, if, if there's wordsmithing that needs to happen, post-public hearing, to get language that everybody's comfortable with, I think we can do that largely internally.
What's your timeframe for getting this ideally?
That is entirely up to the commission as to their comfort level. If we have, if we have a draft that, that's comfortable to go forth for public comment, that's, that's what.
Right now, it's, we need to see where everybody is. Like I said, early December, kind of get a sense of where we are, and that's going to guide where we go next, because then it's a matter of, do we get the, do we need to have more substantive talks? We need to have them with the consultant. I think we should, I mean, after that, I think a redraft is fair, not to encompass everybody's agreement on details, but more to kind of reflect more general items that we've discussed. Go, I think going to public hearing at that point is feasible. Maybe it's not. After two months, we may find that it's not feasible. But like I said, this is kind of a projection idea. Get the public's input to see where they are. Again, I expect that they will be, their ideas will be more general, kind of where we have been lately. And then after that, it's a matter of, okay, now we have to go, where are we with the public input? And where are we with, you know, potential wordsmithing and details too? So, and maybe that requires another public hearing after that. I don't know the exact answer, but that's, it's, there's nothing set in stone. It's fairly, I don't want to say fluid. We have a general idea where we need to go, but it's all going to depend on us. And, you know, it's, you know, be as open as we can about that, and we can discuss it. But that's kind of where I see things going at this point. Commissioner Harrison?
One more question, and I know this has kind of been away, but can we consider when we do redraft it is to have, have it the changes in red line? Just so we can just see like what's changed?
Yeah, if we can.
Just being up, I'm a visual person, what does?
No, you're right. If, if there's a way of getting it off of whatever program they have into a Word document, that would be helpful. I don't remember what, I remember asked, me or Commissioner Harrison asked for red lines and whatever program they used it and didn't allow for it. If we, and I don't care if it goes to an intern and copying and pasting it all on a Word document.
A gigantic document too, so.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it makes a lot of sense that we would have some red lines. I think that would be helpful, you know?
I, I, I understand what you're asking. We will endeavor to accommodate that.
I know.
To the extent that we can.
Have some file, and I know, I may not, I don't know. So, all right, thank you.
Anything, anything else? Okay. As usual, thank you for the discussion during the meeting. Have a happy Thanksgiving us through early December.
Meg, thanks again.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, hopefully.
Beer season again.
It is seasonal plumage, yes.